Good morning, good afternoon, and good evening, whatever time of day it is. Thank you for tuning in to Conversations with Dr. Don. This show is produced and broadcast from the Portland, Oregon metropolitan area. Now, for your first-time viewers, Conversations with Dr. Don is an ongoing series of one-hour standalone talk shows, where I interview interesting people like most of you out there about who they are, as unique, one-of-a-kind individuals, and about whatever it is that we're going to talk about. And this evening, we're going to talk about the humanity of City Commissioner Candidate Fred Stewart. City Commissioner Candidate Fred Stewart, who I met not too long ago. Was very impressed with how he addressed a group I was a member of about his candidacy and why he's running. And he had so much nice, impressive stuff until I practically begged him to come on the show.
You don't have to beg me. I'd love to come on. Very honored that you would want me to come on and talk.
How are you feeling right now?
I'm feeling good. You know, the campaign's a little hectic right now, but I'm loving it. And I'm delighted that I ran.
We've got to...I'm going to be partisan. We've got to get you to win so that you can keep moving up the ladder and you'd be a good candidate for public office.
Well, that's what I want. I mean, the only job I think I want...there's only two jobs I've seen myself ever doing in my life. One of them I already do, and that's a real estate broker. And I love doing that. And I've been doing that most of the time since 1988. I started when I was 23. And the other one is to be on city council. Other than that, I really don't see myself doing anything else in my life. I think that's...those two jobs are the calling that I've had.
And those take enough of your time anyhow.
They take enough of my time.
All right. So, as you know, the show goes in two major parts. The first part is what I call the bio part, where I talk to you about who you are so the viewers get an idea of where you're coming from when you say things.
Okay.
And the second half of the show will be talking more about your candidacy and anything related to that. And if you run out of time, I've got a couple of goofy questions that'll take you off, like the presidential race and that kind of goofy stuff if we ever have time.
Okay.
But we'll go from there. So, okay. Also, I want to warn you, I have a trick question now and then I ask just to catch you off-guard.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, so...my viewers have been watching for a long time, like 16 years. And occasionally, maybe once every couple of years, I mention a little detail about who I am. And I will do that this time. "I was born in New Orleans, Louisiana, of red, white, and black Roman Catholic parentage on December 26, 1928. Today, I am A-religious and accepting of all others. I'm a retired PhD clinical psychologist and present-day television broadcast journalist. I'm the 12th of 12 children."
Wow.
"I'm married, and I'm the father of five daughters by first marriage. Politically, I'm a progressive populist activist, still learning how to live lovingly. A few of my heroes include Jesus, Gandhi, Martin Luther King, and any other fellow human who is currently living lovingly. And I'm still learning how to walk that talk." So, now, if I asked your best friend, "Who is Fred?" What would your best friend say? Be your best friend. Fred is what?
Oh my God, that's hard. I've got so many friends.
Uh-huh. Pick one, and what would he or she say about you? Fred is what?
Well, smart, loyal, honest, forthright, easy to get along with, laid-back. I think those are the words you'd hear to describe me. I think some would say protective, because I'm very protective of my family and friends. You know, and my community. I've always been that way.
Now, you're talking about you and the first person. I was interested in this question.
Well, no, I think they would say that about me, so I was kind of doing it in the third person. I think they would say that. They would say, you know, Fred's very protective of his family and friends.
Okay.
And his community.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they would say that.
Where were you born?
I was born in Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
Yep, yep, in 1964. And I was an army brat. My dad was in the US Army. And so, the first 11 years of my life, I lived all over the...technically, technically, all over the world, kind of. Because when I was three or four months old, I moved to Europe. And I came back just before I turned two. And then I lived in several states around the country. And then, in 1976, when I was 11-years-old, we moved here. And so, I had quite the experience the first 11 years of my life. You know, I moved around a lot. And I still have a few friends to this day that I made during those travels. Not Europe, because I was too young. I'm talking about the United States. And it's kind of neat. I was telling somebody the other day, I got friends on my Facebook going all over the country, and some of them go back to when I was nine-years-old.
And still staying in touch with some.
Still staying in touch with some.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm very, very blessed.
You ready for your next trick question? That'll be the last one.
All right.
Why were you born?
Why? Because my dad wanted a son really bad. No, this is the truth. And my mom wanted to be a housewife really bad. And so, they both wanted...they had two miscarriages before me, so they were dedicated. I had two siblings that didn't make it before me. So, they were highly dedicated in making a family.
You betcha.
And...
And your brothers and sisters still alive?
Yes, I got one brother and one sister. And I'm the oldest, and the boldest, as they call it.
I like...I never heard that before.
Yep, the oldest and the boldest.
Anything significant about your national or cultural or racial heritage that's worth mentioning for the viewers? Anything significant?
You know, I'm learning more and more, digging into both sides of my family. And I'm learning that my family is kind of mixed up. We got, of course, African in us.
Yeah.
But we also got a lot more white than I was expecting. And we got a lot more Native Americans. So, I don't know what...I don't know what the percentages would all be.
Neither me.
But it's like, wow, we're pretty...my family's pretty mixed up.
Yeah.
So, I've...it's been a fun journey. And one part of my family...I've got to finish reading these documents that some cousins gave me. But one part of my family can be traced back to a slave that was owned by George Washington's sister.
Really?
Yeah, sister and her husband.
An ancestry thing is something else, isn't it?
It is fascinating. Yeah.
So, okay, and do you have a religious preference?
You know, not really. I'm a Christian. I consider myself a Christian because I believe in, you know, God. But I'm not one of these guys that goes to churches very often. I just...it's just something that I've just never been comfortable...even though I got a lot of preachers in my family. And just not something I've ever...I've never had a church home.
Your formal education? Say a few words about that.
My formal education is weird. I got, you know, of course, I went to high school and graduated.
I didn't graduate high school. I dropped out in junior high.
Well, you know, I would have dropped out. The only reason I did not drop out of high school, and I say this, is my friends. If it hadn't been for my friends, I would have dropped out. I was absolutely positively bored in Portland Public Schools. And by the time I...the end of my junior year, I really didn't see any relevance for high school. But I did stay, and I did graduate. And then, I went to college for a couple of years. I did. When I thought I was going to become an officer of the Marines, I was committed to doing that for a while. I got out of the Marine Corps, and because I knew my ex-wife couldn't have handled being a Marine wife, which is no big deal. It's very tough being the wife of a US Marine, especially in aviation. Somebody, you know, an aviation officer. Then, I went into real estate, basically. And, you know, I had to study for real estate. I had to learn a lot for real estate. At the beginning of my career in real estate, I worked at Franz Bakery. So, I had to learn about baking, a little bit about that. I got hired by Joe Franz to work at Franz Bakery.
F-R-A-N-Z.
Yeah, a big one. And then, I took a bunch...I've taken countless courses in real estate. Countless courses in everything. I got out for a little while of real estate and got into banking. And I was a...worked for an investment bank, Macquarie Bank, out of Sydney, Australia, for a while. And they had us take a ton of banking and financial-minded courses. Most of those courses were, you know, based out of, you know, Macquarie University and Yale and stuff like that. But I wouldn't say that I did enough to get a degree. But I did a lot of...I took a lot of courses. And...
Do you know what your IQ is?
You know, the Marines said, when I joined the Marines, they made me...they had me take an IQ test when I got down to California for my assessment for OCS or whatever. And they said it was something like 137.
Oh, Jesus.
But that's the Marines.
I knew it.
You know, that's the Marines. You know, the way I look at it is...
I could sense, because I'm being a professional myself. Part of my evaluation of a new client was to spend the first five minutes gathering data and then guessing at what their IQ was. And if I had a chance to take their IQ later on, I checked out whether my perception was right on what the testing says. So, it's fun when I catch somebody who is bright and brighter than me, then I want to find out.
Well, the way I look at it, I had an awful lot of sergeants and officers that were a lot smarter than me. So, I may have had 137 IQ, but that was the case. There's definitely a lot of people I met with lower IQs that definitely knew one or two more things than I did.
It sounds like you've got a pretty good EQ, too, emotional intelligence.
I hope so.
You're a sensitive man?
Um, it depends. I'm sensitive about my family, family first, my friends, and my community. I live in a constant state of frustration of having to be patient and kind to mean people. It's not easy.
Did you see my sign behind you?
Yeah, I know. I saw that.
That's where you got it.
That stuff that my mother has been saying my whole life, and my grandmother, and my grandfather, you know. I will say, I'm 51-years-old, and I'm still disagreeing with them.
Where's your mom and dad now?
My dad lives in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. My mother lives here in Portland. My mother and father broke up back in '75. And, you know, my dad was a Vietnam vet.
Oh, boy.
He had PTSD pretty bad.
Oh, wow.
Very bad. My dad...even my dad said for about 10-years at least, he lost his mind. And so, I'm very sensitive to our soldiers and fighting people that have been in combat. Because I can understand what...to a degree. I mean, I've never been in combat myself, even though I was in the Marine Corps. But I can understand from a witness, watching like what my father went through, dealing with PTSD. And it affected my dad to his core. My mother said that she knew when he got off the airplane, that when he came back from Vietnam, that he wasn't the same. And then, in 2008, some 29-years after he was in...no, God, almost 40-years. Almost 40-years, 39-years after he was in Vietnam. He was here in Portland, Oregon, when I ran for city council. And we were at Old Town Pizza. The whole family was there eating pizza. For the first time, we were all together as a family in, gosh, over 30-years. And my mother was...you know, we all had a good time. And later that day, my mother said, "The man you saw tonight, that was the man I put on the airplane to go to Vietnam."
Being together with the family that came out, eh?
Yeah, she said he was...that was the first time she had seen him the way he was. She goes, "That was the guy that I married. That was the man that, you know, I sent to Vietnam." And she says, "When he came back, he was just not the same."
How is he today with that PTSD?
Well, he's much better in one way and in other ways. He's had some health challenges. My dad had a stroke. He didn't pass away, but he's not the same.
Okay.
Later on, two-years later, he had a stroke. But I will say, you know, my dad...I won't say he overcame it. That's something that...something he would have to say. But I will say, I'm very thankful for the last 15, 20-years of my dad...the years I had with my father.
Sure.
Because he definitely, with the help of a great wife and his church, he definitely came a long way. I'm very, very proud of my father. I know it couldn't have been easy. And I'm very proud of him for his service to the country, and I'm very proud of him of how he dealt with his problems.
There's a certain thing, things that people have that we can only guess at how it really feels.
Correct.
Yeah.
You can only guess. But I know it was important for him to overcome everything. And he was very, very happy. As he used to say to me, that he thought I had a more successful career in the military than he did because I never went into combat. There used to be a little dig between the two of us. My dad retired as a sergeant-major in the US Army.
Oh, wow, man. Military brat.
Yep, I was definitely a military brat. And I always felt bad that I never saw combat. And it was weird. My dad, one day, over beers and cigars, said, "You're proud of me that I went into combat." And he says, "And I'm proud of you because you never did."
There's some depth behind that, for sure. So, we talked about your work to some degree. You have a partner, a wife, a girlfriend, a boyfriend, or something. I've got to cover all the bases.
Yeah, you've got to cover the bases. I'm definitely heterosexual, but nope, I'm a single guy. I haven't found the one yet. But I don't think you partner in business either. I run my company by myself. I'm a lone soldier.
Are you available for the right woman?
Oh, yeah. I figure one day she'll pop up.
Look in that camera. Tell her what you're looking for.
Oh, no. I'm not going to do that. No, I just think it'll happen. Maybe it's not meant to...maybe it's not meant to happen. Maybe, you know, I'm meant to be a Spartan, you know? You know, the old days, 100-years ago, Marines were all...you know, they were all singles.
Yes, yes.
I always considered myself a good Marine, so maybe it's meant for me to be single. You never know.
You never know. And your political persuasion, are you left, right, or center, or what?
You know, I consider myself left, though I'm not, you know, crazy like a lot of the people that I'm dealing with in Oregon in politics on the left. We had a lot of crazy lefties, just like we got crazy righties here in Oregon.
I thought you were going to vote for Trump, aren't you?
No, no.
Don't hit me, man.
No, 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 no. I would not vote for Trump. No, I, you know, I always put my community first. I'm very narrow-minded in that area. So, I'm the type of person, when it comes down to politics, I'm more progressive, I think.
Yes.
And...but I'm...my community first.
Yeah.
You know, so what's best, I think, for my family and my community is where I lean. But for the last, I don't know, 30-years, it's been very difficult to lean right, if you know what I'm talking about. Very difficult, especially when Donald Trump is leading the charge.
What's the difference between sympathy and empathy? You know a difference between those two?
Sympathy, you feel sorry for somebody. Empathy, you can feel their pain.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay. That's my last psychological question I'm going to ask you, because I knew what the answer was when I asked you. Any memberships in political, social, or civic organizations you want to mention? You don't have to mention?
No, I mean, I'm a board member of Oregon Black Pioneers. Oregon Black Pioneers is a nonprofit group that I think everybody in Oregon should pay attention to because they're the ones that are preserving and sharing the rich culture history of the black community of Oregon. And I think that does nothing but help people understand how important Oregon is, not just to us Oregonians, but to our country. Oregon's...Oregon's eclectic relationship with the black community and vice versa, I think is nothing short of fascinating.
Yes.
And I think people should study it, and that'll help them learn more, not just about people like me and, you know, the black community, but it'll help them understand how Oregon is Oregon, the way we look at people, the way we treat people, you know? It's a lot of very good historical information Oregon Black Pioneers is preserving right now.
Yeah. Persons from the past, or even alive today, that you especially look up to or feel good about? Give me a couple of names.
There's quite a few. My grandfather, of course. Everybody who knows me knows how much of an influence he had in my life, which was massive. I lost a good friend three-years ago named Professor Robert Texter. Was another incredible influence in my life. I miss him, too. Of course, my father and my mother. I've been lucky. I've had a lot...I've had a lot of very good people in my life. I still have a lot of good people in my life, you know, that have helped me, that have been very, very important influences, you know, on me. And what I think is fascinating is a lot of these people, you know, a lot of them are gone now, so, you know, I miss them.
How about historical figures? Like, I've been doing this for a number of years, and I've got a list of them. And I only mention three or four at a time, and there's a couple more in case I miss Malcolm X.
Well, it's not because I have a sixth...was it five-times grandfather named after him? But Amistad, you know, the slave that won this...I've always thought that story was incredible, and that leadership was incredible. And the boldness, loved it, which then translates into, you know, other people like that, you know? Abraham Lincoln, Martin Luther King, of course. I think every person in America, you know, looks at, you know, looks at him, learned of him.
He's an incredible human.
All the way down to Obama. You know, I think President Obama is an incredible leader, incredible human figure. A black man leading a country in transition. I don't think we're post-racial yet. I think we're in the transition to be post-racial. Only God knows how many more years we've got to become post-racial. But I love his grace and how he deals with adversity, especially when he's facing, obviously, racist people. And I think he's a credit to the entire country as far as how to deal with the negatives and how to stay focused on, you know, what's best for, you know, for your people, for your country. But, you know, I've got a lot of people like that that...
How about Gandhi?
I like Gandhi, too. The only thing I don't like about Gandhi is I do feel there are sometimes a butt-kicking is in order. You know? I do feel you need to take...more often than not, you need to turn the other cheek. I don't think violence is the way you should solve anything. But I also understand that sometimes your enemy won't let you retreat. Sometimes your enemy won't let you surrender. And when you're in those positions, I feel you have to, you know, stand up and defend yourself.
Oh, Jesus turned the other cheek, didn't he?
Well, you know, if I was God's son, I would probably turn the other cheek, too. But unfortunately, I'm not God's son. And, you know, but like I said, I don't think violence is the way that you should resolve problems. But I do recognize, you know, just the human nature of life. Sometimes your enemy will absolutely not let you surrender, you know? Even if it's unconditional. An unconditional surrender sometimes with an enemy is not good enough.
How about Malcolm?
I like Malcolm, especially after he came back from Mecca.
Yes.
I like how honest he was. I can't say I agree with everything Malcolm said, but I think...
He was evolving.
He was evolving. I think that's what I respect about him the most, was his...he was evolving. And he was showing more empathy toward other people. You know, he was the first, I think, black leader that really went through that journey, even though I think Martin Luther King did it, too, but I think it was just more obvious with Malcolm X.
Yeah, because he was just so in your face, so to speak.
Well, yeah, but I mean, yeah, he let that emotion out more. I mean, as great as Martin Luther King was, I don't think Martin Luther King...I think he held a lot back.
Yes.
You know what I mean? I think he held a lot in. And whereas Martin Luther King, not Martin Luther King, but Malcolm X, you know, let a lot out there. Let a lot of emotion, a lot of feelings.
And they had to take him out because there were too many people starting to follow in his footsteps. Well, yeah.
That's my opinion. That's the reason why I can't stand Louis Farrakhan, most leaders in the Nation of Islam today. I think a lot of the problems in the black community started the moment black people murdered Malcolm X. The black community's never been the same. We have never gotten along the same. We've never worked together the same. We've never...we've not been the same since February 1965, when three young black men killed one of the most important leaders this country has had in the last 100-years.
He came along too soon.
No, I think his message was important at that time. You know, it was a good counter to Martin Luther King's, you know...not...I won't say counter, but they helped each other. They gave us a full argument on how we were to proceed, and a full argument to the white community, too. So, I think he came at the right time. I wish you could see where we're at today. The fascinating thing I tell people would be, what would be...it would be great if we could have both Martin Luther King and Malcolm X together for a little while, just so they could see how things have changed, just to see what their impressions would be, what...how they felt. I'd want to know where they think we failed ourselves or failed them. But I think they were both very important people to have during that period of time.
What do you think of Bernie?
I like Bernie Sanders a lot. I don't know if he's going to be an effective president. But I don't know if any of the people who are running for president will be effective because there's a lot of things that have to change in this country, a lot of things.
For what? For example?
Oh my God, the list goes on. The burden that we've put on the poor and the middle class is just overwhelming. It is literally overwhelming. This is not the country that I was born in, when you look at the pressures that we're putting on. The absolute death grip the upper 20% have on our cultural and national resources. It's just tough, you know? We've got to change that. We've got to change our, you know, how we look at each other. We've got to change our focus from being a superpower. I really hope, over the next 25-years, we become an even more powerful nation in that we can defend ourselves and protect ourselves from all threats. But I really hope the United States walks away from being the police of the world.
Is America an empire?
No, no. I just think it's an irresponsible, very powerful country.
But you don't think it's an empire?
Not yet.
I've been looking for a reason for you and I to get in a fight.
No, no, I don't think so.
I think it is.
Because we don't control enough people. You know, we don't control Canada. We don't control Mexico. We don't control, you know, Europe. We don't control China, you know? We have a hard time controlling the people we got in this country.
Is there any other country in the world that has as many bases on other countries as the United States?
No, but Chelsea, I remember our bases are shrinking. We're going to have a lot fewer bases over the next five-years. We've already got the fewest bases that we've had since World War II right now. And two, that doesn't necessarily mean we're an empire, just because we've got 10,000 men or 5,000 men. A lot of the bases we had had less than 2,000 men on them. You're not going to control a country with 2,000 well-trained men. You're not going to...you're not going to be able to do that.
If you've got enough money, you can control everybody and everything. But we better postpone this to the next time you come on.
No, that's all right. We can talk about it. But I will say, at the end of this, I think we've been very irresponsible with our power over the last 50-years. And I think it's time for us to come back home, focus on home.
What are we going to do about terrorism?
I think terrorism is something that we definitely got to handle on as far as protecting ourselves from it. And I think when we start getting out of other people's business, we'll see even less terrorism. We need to focus on our own people. We've got too many people in this country, you know, suffering, for us to be worrying about as many people as we do outside of our country. We've got a very arrogant class of liberals here in the United States who will go and do work, good work, in Africa and help Africans. But they won't help the black person down the street.
Because there's some other thing playing in the background.
Exactly. Well, you know, I was having a very good conversation, debate about a year ago. I was a very good friend of mine who's white, and they've done a lot of work in Africa. And I'm proud of them. I mean, they've done some good work. But I told him, I said, "Think about all the things that you could have done here in the United States. If you wanted to help black people, I know thousands of black people that smart, educated people like you could have helped. Maybe we wouldn't have had a million black young men and women murdered in our streets since 1970. Maybe we wouldn't have had that. Maybe you could have helped save some of those lives."
So, perhaps their compassion takes second place in order of priority.
To what?
If you're more compassionate, it means you can be more empathetic and appreciate the pain more deeply and do something about it, and look more deeply at the causes of it, such as classism and that kind of thing. But I'm on my soapbox now.
No, 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 you're right, but classism, you know, classism, control of resources, you know, sympathy for your neighbor. You know, we got an awful lot of people in Oregon politics that have no sympathy for the struggling people in Oregon, let alone the struggling people in Portland. They have no, no empathy, even though financially they may not be too much above, you know, where, you know, where these people are. They're, they're focusing mostly, it's on, you know, keeping their political position, gaining more power, not understanding that, you know, their real power is helping that person that needs them.
Now, I was gonna become a priest. I was an altar boy for years. I was born Roman Catholic. And I still see myself as a Christian, first of all, with a small C. Because I don't belong to a particular sect or a particular religion. But Christ, whether he was an imaginary, imaginary figure or not, had a model and he walked the talk and he turned the other cheek. So bottom line, this is what I want to aspire to. One more comment about that, because then we gotta move on to the second half, because they'll be yelling at me in a minute.
Okay.
Shall we take a break?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Hello, we're back again. Thanks for staying tuned. And for your viewers who missed the opening of the show, Conversations with, Conversations with Dr. Don is an ongoing series of one-hour standalone talk shows where I interview interesting people, like most of you out there, about who they are, as unique, one-of-a-kind individuals and about whatever it is that we have decided to talk about. We're talking about city government and talking with Fred about running for city council, city commissioner in Portland, Oregon, and I'm having a wonderful time so far. So let's get a little more deeper into what you're about. I made some notes based on what you sent me. You talk about making Portland a better city for its citizens. How, how would you do that? How would you make Portland a better city? Better for its citizens?
It's the approach. One of the biggest shortfalls of the city of Portland right now is the people we've got on city council, all of them. None of them make decisions based on the values, I think, the average values that people in Portland have. The average Portlander is, has compassion for their fellow citizen. The average Portlander respects the rights of other people to live their lives. But the, the same respect, the average Portlander believes in everybody, in safe communities, everybody being safe, everybody being protected, you know? That's not the type of city council we've got. The city council we've got right now, you know, if you look at how they're handling the homeless, you know, we've got people in need. We've got, depending who you talk to, between 2,000 and 4,000 people homeless. The way I look at it.
That's tragic.
About a third of them are just flat-out criminals. You know, bloodthirsty, flat-out everyday criminals. A third of them are mental health people, people who've got mental issues that need help, need support. We've got about a third who just can't make it in this economy. They are not, they're not able to make enough to keep up with the bottom line in our, in our economy. This is the most expensive Portland has ever been to live. So what I look at is, our city council is not protecting our homeless or our public from our criminals that are homeless. They're not. We get more and more criminals moving to Portland all the time.
What can they do about that?
Oh, law enforcement, definitely, law enforcement. They're not doing enough to help our mentally challenged people. People who need to be in medications, people who need monitoring, people who need a safe place to live because they can't really take care of themselves. Because they can't take care of themselves, they're a public safety risk to all of us and to themselves. And they, they don't know any better, they don't know any different. And they're just letting these people die in our streets. That's their solution. And then we've got the people who are just economic refugees. They're hard-working people, they're good people like anybody else in Portland. But they need some help because right now, this is a tough town to live in. If you've grown up here and not grown economically with the city.
Yeah.
You are being pushed out of your hometown by the people who are moving here. And this is the first time in our history that that's happened and our city council is not doing anything about it.
And you have some ideas on how to remedy that, that situation?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think the city needs to be more aggressive and working with developers and bringing more housing to the market. The city needs to get into land banking and more, more planning for housing for people who are making 20, right now, $20 an hour or less. We absolutely need to do that. City needs to start considering land banking. We're gonna be growing for quite some time. We've got another 20 to 30 years of population growth. It's gonna ebb and flow, it's not always gonna be as intense as it is right now. There may be times it's a lot lower, sometimes it's gonna be a lot more intense. But we've been going through this growth spurt off and on since at least 1970. And we have no reason to believe that it's gonna stop before 2070.
How are you gonna get fellow city commissioners to go along with your ideas?
Well, one, I'm gonna talk to them like any other city commissioner, I'm gonna argue with them like any other city commissioner. But the other one is I'm gonna be taking what I'm talking about to the streets and to the neighborhoods. You know, I, in order for a guy like me to be effective, I'm gonna need help. Just because I get elected to city council doesn't mean I'm gonna be able to, on my own, get the job done, you know? I'm gonna need help from the community. And that means I'm gonna have to continuously communicate with the community, I'm gonna have to continuously have conversations with the community. I mean, I gotta listen to them, I gotta hear from them. And I gotta encourage that. You know, as a leader, I've gotta be the one that makes that vulnerability happen. Okay? So I can learn how I can serve the community better.
All right. Got some questions based on the bio stuff you sent me.
Okay.
Fred had no desire to become a career politician. That wasn't your.
That's true.
In the beginning, yeah.
That's true, it's been a struggle. I mean, everybody's known, I've been curious and interested in running for office. I've, I've supported a lot of candidates to run for office over the years, I have. I, I wasn't 100% sure that I, I needed to run for office. It wasn't until Steve Novick that I knew I had to be there. Steve Novick and Amanda Fritz convinced me that I needed to run for city council.
What do you think about those two people?
I think Amanda would be a great neighbor.
She's been on my show twice in the past.
But she's a horrible city commissioner, horrible.
Why is she horrible? She's such a lovely human being, man.
Well, no, she is a lovely human being. She is a very lovely human being. But sometimes lovely human beings, this is, you know, that, that does, that's not the right job for them. Which is an interesting dynamic. One of the reasons why she's a horrible city commissioner is she's too nice and she's too hesitant. She's not decisive, not effective. And even though she emails everybody and listens to what they say, she doesn't really take the heart, what a lot of people say.
Okay, I'm gonna challenge you. What do you mean by too nice?
Too nice. Too nice is, um, let's see, what's a good example of Amanda being too nice? Not calling Steve Novick and Charlie Hales out for the street fee. Not calling the city council members out for raising system development fees and permits, which in course has raised rents throughout the city.
Yeah.
Not championing the underdog as the way she should.
She doesn't want to offend certain people, huh?
So what? Sometimes you gotta offend the bad people. And the bad people are people who are hurting us.
How are you gonna get her to change her way of doing it?
It's gonna be impossible.
No.
There is no way.
Come on, Fred.
Amanda is every, Amanda is too nice. And you see, the fascinating thing is.
Yeah.
That's why she's not qualified to do the job. Steve Novick's too mean. He's a bully. He's an arrogant bully.
He's been on my show in the past too.
Yep, and he's arrogant. He's an arrogant bully.
I don't experience him that way, of course, that was years ago.
That was years ago. He was much nicer before he became a city commissioner. Much nicer. I think the city council is not a good fit for him. Like I told Steve a week ago, I would vote for him in a heartbeat for Congress or Senate or hell. I think if Obama called him up and says, "I'm gonna nominate you for the Supreme Court," I'd support that too.
Really?
But I don't think, I don't think he's a good fit in city council. He's too mean, he's too arrogant.
Give me an example of how he's too mean.
Ah, the street fee. And when people didn't like it, what did he do? He told them he was gonna do it anyway. He's still telling people, he may, if the, if the gas tax fails, he's gonna bring the street fee back because he feels if he gets re-elected, it's a mandate. It's a mandate that the street fee was not as bad of an idea as everybody thinks.
Say what you mean by street fee, because there are other metropolitan areas in the country that are gonna be watching this show. This show goes all over the country, not just to mention the world.
Well, we have, we have a proposal.
What's a street fee?
We're already taxed for our roads, through our county and taxes and through our, our road taxes. And there's different funding areas in each of the governments to handle our roads. Steve Novick, in order to, to handle potholes and basic maintenance for the, for the current roads that we've got, we're not even talking about paving any of the 59 miles of roads we don't have paved or the 100 miles plus of sidewalks, we're talking about just maintaining the roads that we've got. He was going to institute a street fee. And there was very, the proposal of the, of the street fee.
Meaning it was gonna be a tax?
It was gonna be a fee that you have to pay every year.
Who pays?
The property owner.
Oh.
You know? Which is gonna be passed on, in a lot of cases, to the property user. In other words, the renters and the, and the leases. So, you know, it would have raised rents, not a lot in the very beginning because the, the tax itself was not very much in the very beginning. But they, they would not put any controls to keep the tax from growing quite sizable. And eventually, those taxes could have very easily affected, putting, putting upward pressure on rents in Portland.
So you didn't think there should be a street fee?
No, shouldn't be a street fee.
How are you gonna keep the streets up where people don't.
One.
Break their axles and stuff?
Well, one, they're, they're wasting a lot of money currently with ODOT, I mean, with PDOT that he controls. Over the last three years, Steve Novick's been given almost a billion dollars to manage our roads.
PDOT means?
Portland Development, I mean, Portland Department of Transportation.
Yes, okay.
And, you know, you, I tell everybody, look at our streets. You know, if you go around Portland, does it look like the city of Portland has invested a billion dollars? So you gotta remember, none of the bridges the city has any control over. We don't do maintenance on any of the bridges except maybe the Morrison. And even most of the maintenance we do on that is paid for by, you know, other, other resources like from the county and the, and the state and stuff. But.
Isn't there some federal funding that helps with the bridges?
Yeah, occasionally, but the bottom line is, we've got a billion dollars of Portland taxpayers' money spent on our roads over the last three years. And I tell everybody, just look at your roads, just forget about the street fee, anything else. Do you see where a billion dollars has been spent on our roads? And most people say no.
Where'd the money go?
Well, I'd like to know where it went too. But from my, my best assessment, it looks like it's just been wasted on a bunch of boondoggle products, I mean, projects, feel-good projects, projects that in many cases have failed and not gone the way that they said it would go. It's been a lot of, it's just a big mess.
Are you talking to Amanda and, and Steve about, about your views on the street fee?
Well, they've learned, you know, through the campaign.
Yeah.
You know, I, I communicated to both of them, you know, two years ago when the street fee was on, was up deck. They didn't respond, you know, they, they didn't respond, so that's fine.
Why didn't they respond?
You know, I don't know, that's something people should ask them. I was nice in the, in the email, so, you know, maybe they don't think I'm important enough, you know? Or as what some people say, maybe I'm just not light enough, who knows? Maybe they're not used to a, a smart black person. None of them have very many black people around that work with them. That's another reason why I wanted to run for office. We've got a white monolithic city council. And why does that say city council? Not just the city commissioners, most of the people that work for them, most of the people they interact with, most of the people that they deal with. They, they have a few token black people around them, they, they do.
So racism still exists to some degree?
They, you know, a city commissioner, and eight times out of 10, is not even gonna notice racism in any of their decisions or the decisions other people make unless it's very overt. It has to be overt for them to really notice it, slap them in the face with it. And one time out of 10, something racist happens and they will not think it's that big a deal.
White privilege?
Big time, big time. You know, I mean, look at their age. I'm, they're all either my age or older, you know? And, you know, none of them grew up with very many black friends or black relationships, not very many. And if they did, they were basically white privileged ones. You understand, where, you know, a black person, they, they didn't, none of them have, like, this is the difference between my friends that I went to high school with.
Yeah.
My friends grew up with a black guy that's confident, self-aware, feels equal, acts equal. They treat me equal.
Sure.
You understand? We are equal friends. They didn't have that growing up. None of the people on city council have any long-term black friends they look at as equal peers.
Intimate.
Yeah, equal peers. Whereas I got high school chums and buddies, dozens of them, you know? They've got not just me, but other black people they look at as equals. We grew up that way. So we look at the world a little different.
How are you gonna address that kind of thing to those people who need to have some compassion or sensitivity to what you're talking about? It's an impossible task.
It's an impossible task. It, it, that's why they can't, that's why they're not fit for government for where we need to go. You, you're not gonna change Charlie Hale, Steve, or any of those guys. They're too old, they're set in their ways. Charlie is a good man, he's done some great things for black people.
He's mayor?
Well, city commissioner, he hasn't done anything for black people as mayor. He's done some great things. He would not, he's not empathetic enough to recognize his own racism. He's not. But he's a, you know, he, he's got a good heart, he's a good person.
So those are people in Portland government right now.
Correct.
And you mentioned white privilege, or I did too a couple of times. Will you say a few words about what, what white privilege means? Because there's some viewers out there who are not sure what that really means.
Well, a perfect example in Portland, Oregon, is since 1988, we've had over 500 young black people kill each other in our streets. Black gang members.
500.
Now, Portland is not Los Angeles, it's not, okay? Name one city commissioner or mayor that has effectively tried to protect the black community from this carnage, from this violence. We've got a lot of people who've been able to articulate, I think, very well, what are the causes of this violence? Why are we having this going on? The lingering effects of historical racism, the current effects. We've really had a very good picture drawn by some people who I think have done some very good research and very good work. Why isn't the white leadership in Oregon and, and on the county and on the city council in the state? How come they're not listening?
White privilege?
White privilege.
Blinders?
Blinders, blinders, you know? It's not that they don't get the information, they just don't accept the message.
There's another message playing underneath that's more important and more powerful. It's like defending white privilege.
Mm-hmm. No, I think so. That's why you can't, one of the things I keep saying in my campaign is you can't keep voting for the same type of people and expect to see different results. We've got a lot of people in, in, in politics in Oregon, they're good people, they are nice people. But they're not what Portland needs, they're not what Oregon needs for the future.
Magically, let's move the, the, the calendar forward and see if we can find some sort of a magical way to have those kinds of people look more sympathetically and empathetically to the plight of black people and homeless people.
Correct.
And the people who are mentally ill, who need to be treated and not jailed as criminals.
No, I agree, I agree.
How are we gonna do that?
Get new people. The people we've got aren't gonna be able to do it. They, they're not gonna be able to, they were, they were not that type of person before they got into politics. They're not gonna become that type of person while they're in politics.
You're making it hard for me to have hope.
No, there isn't, there is no hope with the people that we've got today. There is no hope. I mean, the tough thing is a lot of them are very nice people. Some of the nicest, smartest white people that. Some of the nicest, smartest white people that I know in Oregon do some of the most racist, racist, cold-blooded, heartless things to their own people.
Well, how are you gonna get to them?
You can't.
You got to?
No, they, they, it's time for them to retire. That's why I encourage, not, I encourage a lot of my friends and, and anybody watching this who's got a commitment to their community, it's time you start doing what I'm doing. Run for office. Run for office, especially if there's an incumbent. We've got a system now where incumbents feel so comfortable that they don't even look for a reason to change. They basically play it safe and just keep doing what they're doing. If you want to really make things different, start voting for different people. Vote for me this time in Portland City Council, and if I suck, if I get elected, run against me. We gotta start running against incumbents. And there's a lot of good people in our community who don't understand that they could probably do no worse than the person they're about to vote for.
You're sounding like a revolutionary.
People keep saying that, and I, it's not so much I'm saying a revolutionary, I'm just saying it's time for us as a community to take responsibility of our own government, and that comes with challenging those that have disappointed us. And I'm not just saying yell and scream at them, which is, I think, is a good idea to, too. But what, you know, this whole thing about not running against incumbents, we got a lot of people out there who are thinking about running for office one day, or they'd like to run for office one day, but they don't, they always hear, "You can't run against an incumbent, you shouldn't run against an incumbent." And I'm saying that is the very thing that keeps us in the, the situation we're in right now, failure.
In his professional life, he began to develop a unique vision of Portland's future that business, business as usual politicians never see. What's this unique vision in Portland's future?
Well, we've been talking about some of it. One about inclusion, you know, we're seeing this debate going on about how we should be allowing people who are transgendered which bathrooms they should use and everything, and doing all of these scare tactics of, you know, "Oh my God, if a, if a, a post, or a pre-op transsexual goes into the bathroom at the same time I'm in the bathroom, oh my God, something could happen." You know, you know what I mean? I mean, times are changing. Our leaders have gotta change with it.
Yeah.
You, you understand? We are trying to be more fair to each other. We're trying to be more empathetic with each other. Our leaders have gotta reflect that, period, you know? This is what we fight for. From the beginning of this country, we've been on this, this track of respecting and protecting each other's freedoms as human beings. And that fight's not over with yet. It didn't stop in 1945, it didn't stop in '65, it's never stopped. It didn't stop in '75, '85, '95, 2005, 2000, there are still things that we need to change so that we can be as free as we feel we ought to be.
Let's broaden this discussion for a moment. Looking at Portland and the kinds of things we're talking about in Portland are, should be going on in Portland, and other cities of this size and larger in America, like Los Angeles and New York and Chicago and, and Flint, Michigan, and those like that. How is Portland compared to those cities in terms of what we've been talking about?
I think Portland has got everything it takes to, to be superior in this area to all of those cities. We've got better people, and, and the people that are moving to Portland are better human beings. You know, they're moving from those places because they are tired of the rut that they've got there, you know? And that's another thing, we can't let ourselves down. You know, we, we've got to keep pushing on this progressive push to be more fair to each other, you understand? And I'm kind of narrow-minded in this area. I don't really care about the rest of the world, I'm just worried about where my family is. You know, I'm worried about Portland.
Come on, Fred!
Maybe if I can affect Portland and get, and help Portland stay on the track that it needs to be on, maybe that can be an example that other places will follow. But I'm more worried about my peeps here in Portland, Oregon, you know what I mean? And I want my people, my family, the people I do business with, my friends, I want them to be comfortable and safe here in this market.
How'd you get to, to have a personality and to think the way that you do? Where'd you get that from?
Family and friends. I've had, I, I was lucky, I've grown up in a, no, no family's perfect, but I've grown up in a great family. And, God, especially during this campaign, I really learned who my friends were. And, oh my God, I've got some incredible human beings that have been there for me my entire life.
Do you love them?
Oh, yeah, I owe them. I owe them. That's why, when I win, I can't fail. I can't fail none of these people. Yeah, my own.
Time is running low, so we're gonna have to stop in another minute or so.
Yep.
And I want you to look in that camera and, and talk to the viewers about anything comes to mind right now. And I'm so glad you came on the show.
Well, thank you for inviting me. Viewers out there, as you fill out your ballots, I want you to look at your city, look at your community for the last four years, and I want you to think about something. Are we where we should be? Have the people that have asked for your support, have they lived up to the promises they made four years ago? And if you don't feel they have, don't vote for them, vote for somebody else. More importantly, vote. We literally have people out there who are counting on you to not, either not vote or vote for the name that you're familiar with, not vote on the record that you're familiar with. We cannot expect our community to be as good as it should be, as good as we deserve, if we keep voting for the same people that fail us over and over again. So I'm running for Portland City Council against Steve Novick. I would love to have your support and your vote. You can go to my website, fredstewart.com. And like I said, if you elect me, I will do everything I can not to let you down.
Okay, I gotta stop, because they're gonna yell at me.
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very, very much.
You've been delightful. All right, any PSA, Public Service Announcements? You got the American Civil Liberties Union. Go to the ACLU and learn more about civil liberties, because our civil liberties are going down the tubes.
They are.
And corporate persons, that Supreme Court decision was ridiculous. Corporations are not persons.
I agree.